Mission, the person that is submitting the video is going to be given $100 in chamber bucks courtesy of North Dakota Farmers Union Insurance. So, how do you get those submissions? Well, we'll show you how. We'll call the meeting of the Minot City Council to order today for Monday, October 5th, 2020. It is 5:30 in the afternoon. I would ask that everyone in attendance just double-check your electronic devices to make sure that they're on silence or vibrate to keep distractions or disruptions down to a minimum. Roll call, please.
Evans.
Here.
Janser.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Pittner.
Here.
Padugula.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Sitma.
Here. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number three on our agenda is the mayor's report. I did have a number of different activities and meetings throughout the month. I'll just run through some of them at a high level here very quickly. On September 10th, we did have a Minot Area Development Corporation Board meeting, a task force, a task force meeting for COVID on the 14th with city, city hall officials and department heads. I did a K-Hart radio interview on the 15th. Executive Board meeting for MADC on the 16th. We did have a couple of closings this month for homes that are in the flood control project. State of the City Planning Meeting on the 16th and then the Source Space and Planning Council Annual Meeting via Zoom was on the 17th as well as the recording message for the community leadership involvement for the state dieticians that was also being held via Zoom or another platform for distant meetings. So, starting to see more and more of those. On the 21st, we did have the regular city council meeting. The 22nd was the Task Force 21 Nuclear Triad Conference via Zoom. Did attend the Chambers Annual Meeting on the 23rd. We did have the COVID Coalition Meeting Conference Call on the 23rd. Magic City Discovery Center Press Conference right here at City Hall for the big announcement of the award, which was fantastic. So happy there is a groundbreaking that is coming up this week that I and I'm sure many, many people will be attending. On the 25th, an interview for the Mayor Challenge and then we did have our quarterly meeting for the Ward County Weed Board on the 28th. Another interview for the Mayor Challenge on the 28th. There is the other signing for the closing on the house, home rather, in the flood control project. Recording for the Employee Annual Award Banquet. Unfortunately, we were not able to have the annual employee award banquet in person. It was done pre-recorded, unfortunately. I know it's always great to get in front of everybody and thank them for all of their years of service. So, I'm hoping that at some point that we can get everybody back together for that and if not relive the moment for a lot of those benchmarks that were achieved. October 1st was a big welcome home for the Minot firefighters from Oregon. We'll have more on that in just a little bit. So, I won't spend a lot of time, but certainly was an honor of mine to be able to be there when the firefighters rolled in on more than 1,000 mile journey and weeks and weeks of exceptional service to many other folks that really have endured more than I think many people here want to realize. So, October 1st was the Water Topics Committee Flood Control Update Video Shoot. We are putting together, if you do remember, we were supposed to have the Water Topics Committee from the state legislature here. They were able to meet in Fargo despite all of the COVID concerns. So, we are putting together a video to send out to all of the state legislators and folks on the Water Topics Committee so they can see firsthand what is going on within the community and within the basin-wide project. Yesterday, did sit down with the folks that are here for the documentary regarding flags and then you can see that I think that number might even be a little bit low on 19 other meetings and regular city business along with phone calls, emails, social media, and staff interactions. I would certainly stand for any questions of any of my report for this month. If not, I will turn things over to Acting City Manager, Acting City Manager David Lakefield for the City Manager's Report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We'll try to keep this moving along as quickly as possible. We have a lot going on. It's busy around the city as you're well aware. It's not apparent by looking at this schedule coming up for the important dates for this month. Some of our regular meetings, the Planning Commission, City Council, again on the 19th, Chamber Monthly Meeting and then the Magic Fund Meeting if there are any applications later in the month. NDR continues to progress. The picture here is the Blue on Broadway Project and there actually has been significant additional work completed since this picture was taken. If you haven't been down that way on South Broadway, things were really moving along and continue to get some construction underway. So, we are making some progress on those NDR projects. The Resilient Home Buyer Update, the mayor had a couple of those closings involved or in his mayor's report. The program has closed over 20 new homes by affected persons and they could have been renters or they owned homes that were impacted by the flood or they could have been children of people that were impacted by the flood to qualify. The qualifications have been expanded a little bit recently to allow for even more applications and they continue to market the program and it has been very successful. The Center for Technical Education, we're in the process of working on the agreement for funding with the Magic Fund. There are a number of moving pieces that come along with this program and we're still working through that to make sure that we cover all of the bases and do things correctly. So, we're in process of doing that. The next step would be to bring that draft document to the Contract Committee for review and then it comes to the council for final approval before moving forward with that. The hopeful timeline, we're moving this along as quickly as possible, but it's going to take some time to get through that. So, I wouldn't anticipate it here yet by the end of the October council meeting. Other projects, this picture here on this slide is actually the Roundabout at 13th Street and 31st Avenue Southeast. That portion of the project is actually complete right now. They're wrapping up some of the paving on 31st Avenue. They hope to have that completed by the end of the week. It should be open from Second Street to 13th Street here later this week. They're working on curb and gutter, sidewalks, paths, lighting, all beginning next week and then they'll be doing the cleanup and punch list items to wrap that project up. I saw that they were working this morning when I came to work on the stretch rate from Broadway to Second Street. So, they have done some of the concrete paving there as well. So, they continue to make progress on that project. Storm sewer district, 10th Street Southwest, again entering the final week of underground work, curb and gutter on 10th and 34th Avenue will continue into next week. Driveway aprons are being replaced and in the next two weeks, they expect the top layer of pavement to be placed. So, definitely some progress being made on that project as well. Flood Control for MI-1, the Broadway Pump Station, the brick is being completed. The flood wall stain is about 99% complete and we'll see some of that here in the drone shot. It's really starting to take shape and look nice. The shared use path is being placed on the wet side of the flood walls and then the final lift of paving will be due here in the next week on Fourth Avenue Northeast here. So, we'll just allow this to play through a little bit and you should get a little bit of a view of the staining on the flood wall and it really does look nice. Let's let this play a little bit longer so you can take a look at the flood wall here. Flood Control for MI-23 is substantially complete. Again, this is the drone shot. This is the area over west of 16th Street by the water treatment plant out to the Highway 83 bypass. Again, the drone shot, you can see that the dikes, the grass has been seeded, the walking pass. You can actually see folks there enjoying the walking path in the video and they're just wrapping up the final punch list items and it is substantially complete. Flood Control MI-4A is the utility relocation that will come by City Hall here. If you look to the west of City Hall, you can see some of the work being done and it's starting to impact traffic on Berdick Expressway right over by the entrance to the Moose Lodge. They'll be boring the new water lines and sewer lines underneath the railroad tracks there and we will have some impacts to Berdick traffic. They've had to coordinate all of that work with the railroads. So, that's added a little bit of complexity and, and timing issues into that as well, but work is progressing on that as well. There we go. Jarvis, the city CRP Upgrade Update. We were scheduled to go live on October 1st. We made the call here about a week and a half ago to postpone that to November just because some issues that we felt weren't, weren't comfortable with the amount of testing that had been done and we felt like we were perhaps rushing that a little bit. We wanted to make sure that we had a good product that was thoroughly tested and to minimize any potential issues. The day that we made that decision, our vendor had a ransomware attack that shut down their internal network that most likely would have forced us to make that decision anyway. So, in hindsight, it turned out to be the right decision. We've been able to move along. It's actually been a little bit of a challenge. Tomorrow will be two weeks since that issue started with them and they are still not back to 100% operational. So, we've had to come up with some creative ways to make things happen, which includes having folks manually input items instead of converting data. So, a little more time intensive, but they have stepped up to the plate to help us make that happen and we're fairly confident that the November date will be a goal. Intermodal Update, this is something that has been in the works. I'm not at liberty to provide a bunch of details today, but I just wanted to put this information out there that there is definitely some interest from an operator to come to Minot and to put this together to make things work and we are in the process of doing that. Again, there are a number of interested parties involved in this. So, we have to make sure that we cross all the Ts and dot our Is and we're working through that as we speak. As we work through this and come with some agreements, those will have to come to the council again for approval. So, just put that on the radar screen that we're getting close and hopefully that'll be coming up here in the near future. It's exciting news that hopefully it gets some action or activity going on out there. This video was last week when firefighters returned from their voyage to Oregon to help out with devastating wildfires there. I think they all thought it was a great experience. I know that their assistance was well received and appreciated by the folks in Oregon and I think actually Northern California as well. I did have the opportunity to speak with them briefly as they came into town. I think they were definitely thankful for the experience, but glad to be home as well. So, it looks like they represented the city of Minot well. So, we're thankful that they had the opportunity and that the council allowed them to participate in that. So, just some of the video with them returning home, all in one piece and safe and healthy. So, that was very important for us. All right. I think the mayor also mentioned in his report, we are working on doing a virtual employee recognition event this year. Camilla has been working on putting this together. Due to the pandemic and the restrictions imposed by COVID, we didn't think it was wise for us all to get everyone in a room together and to go through this and hand out awards. So, we will be doing this by video and making that available to everyone to see. So, we don't want to diminish their accomplishments, but we thought it was in the best interest to, to take a different approach and hopefully we can have a little bit of fun with this and, you know, make it as appealing as possible. That's all I have for tonight. I would gladly stand for any questions that any of you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Lakefield. And for the folks that are watching at home, if they haven't had the opportunity, there was a video produced by our city PIO that really did a fantastic job of kind of really outlining, outlining all of the, the work that the Minot Fire Crews, the four volunteers that went out to Oregon and also the return home. It's worth watching if you haven't seen it and if you have, it's worth watching a second time because it just tells a great story of our firefighters and the community. So, any questions for Mr. Lakefield? Thank you, sir. That takes us to our city attorney report. Ms. Hendershot.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I submitted a written report. I'd be happy to answer any-
Is your microphone on?
Did you turn it off? It is on.
There we go.
I'd be happy to answer any questions about the written report.
Any questions for our city attorney? Yes, Alderwoman Evans.
Thanks, Kelly. Was there been an update, I think you said, on one of the cases that you had in your report?
Yep. Mr. Mayor and members of council, for the NV Gentlemen's Club case that was filed at federal court in 2017, I believe, it had been stayed to resolve the state court issues and that was just dismissed recently. I just learned that today and it was dismissed for a lack of prosecution. And that can be restarted again in federal court after the state court part of it is resolved, but it's a one change from the report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you, Kelly. That takes us to number six on our agenda. This is the consent items. I have been asked to pull 6.7 out of the 6.1 through 6.13. Are there any other items that need to be pulled for individual discussion? Otherwise, they will be passed as recommended by staff. Seeing none, I would look for a motion of 6.1 through 6.6 and 6.8 through 6.13.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Ross, second by Alderman Pittner to approve any discussion on the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please call the rule.
Ross.
Yes.
Sitma.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Janser.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Pittner.
Yes.
Padugula.
Yes.
Motion is approved. 6.7 is the donation to the Minot Police Department. This is item PD 0195. A representative from the local electrical company reached out to the police department expressing desire to donate funds to the police department. In total, eight companies contributed to the department, Wheeler Contracting, Larson Electric, Minot Electric, Northwestern Electric, Gefro Electric, Jesse Braun Electric, Groshe Electric, and Maine Electric. The two recommendations before us is recommend the city council accept a local electrical company's donation of $8,000 to the Minot Police Department and two recommend the approval of budget adjustment. This is 001-2004-21-06.50 to reflect the donation to the Minot PD.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Janser to approve. Is there a second? Second by Alderman Pittner. Alderwoman Evans, you had asked that this be pulled.
Yes. I'm wondering if our city attorney can come stand for a question? So, my intention, I think, is to, you know, make a motion to defer this for two reasons. One, in your world, is I don't feel like I have a good grasp on what the parameters of private donations to city government and to police departments are. So, I'm wondering if perhaps you could prepare a memo for council, you know, in one of our upcoming meetings so we're on sure footing with what the laws and policies are about accepting private donations for governmental activities?
Mr. Mayor and Alderwoman Evans, I can definitely do that.
Okay.
Ms. Hendershot, while you're there too, I do have a follow-up question. In regards, we've had donations to the Minot Police Department in the past from Trinity Health as an example for a police dog. Is there any parallel here or is there something that I'm missing on the donation part?
Mr. Mayor, you're correct. The city has accepted donations for the canines before for, from Trinity Health, I believe it was. I haven't reviewed this specific donation, but maybe our finance director has and can weigh in on the donation part of it.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the reason this item is in front of you on the council agenda is because these items are not planned for in the annual budget. So, in order for the police department to expend those funds, we have to do the budget amendment to recognize the donation as the revenue and also to appropriate the expenditure for the equipment. In this case, it looks like it's a UAV or UAS type of vehicle. This is, has been consistent with how we've handled these in the past. There have been a number of them since I have been here. I think the mayor had mentioned, you know, the donations for the purchase of canines. There have been some other donations as well. There's an item on the agenda as well this evening involving donations to the library that is very similar from the Friends of the Library. Sometimes people do donations in memoriam of somebody else that may have had an interest in the library or something. So, they donate in lieu of memorials at the funeral, that type of thing, and then they use that to, to purchase items to further their mission.
Any further questions?
Yeah, I have, not for our city attorney, but for Chief Klug, I do. Yep. Thank you, chief. So, from my understanding, city council has never been discussed the use of unmanned aerial surveillance for the city of Minot. Is that correct?
To my knowledge, that's correct.
That gives me grave concern. I mean, you know, UAVs are becoming more and more a tool of law enforcement. You know, I know the state legislature has dealt with this issue. I really, you know, would like to learn more about how the Minot Police Department plans to use these UAVs for law enforcement purposes, how it fits into the, the scope of the sentry code and their things. So, what I'm hoping is to ask for a motion to defer making a big decision like allowing UAVs to fly over our city until we sort of see a policy from Minot PD on sort of the uses of that, the, the state law applying to that. How, you know, I think the public would like to see how we as a city are going to use this as a law enforcement tool, the justification for it, you know, why, why does a city of 50,000 people need the use of UAVs? So, would, like I imagine, the department will be doing a policy, correct?
That's correct. Mr. Mayor, Alderwoman Evans, just to be clear, the electrical workers did not want this specific project.
Okay.
They asked us to, if they made a donation, would we have a use? And we said we would find one. We went back to them and said, would you mind if we used it for this purpose? So, they're open to another purpose. So, I guess I would ask that maybe the donation could be approved and maybe if, if this project is going to be sought, it takes time anyway. So, even the licensing portion would take us at minimum 60 days. So, absolutely, we would put a policy together. I don't want to put the cart before the horse, so to speak. There's a number of different things that have to be taken into consideration when doing this. $8,000 is really just a drop in the bucket. I mean, a UAV itself can be anywhere between $2,000 and $50,000. So, but just to give an example, when you look at a city the size of 50,000, we had the incident with the missing child earlier this year where I made the decision to call in skyscopes. Had they actually launched, that would have been a much more expensive bill than what we paid. So, we would have probably spent this amount of money if we would have went more than one day. So, that's part of it. But I can definitely put more information together. I'd answer any questions you have today.
I mean, I would like to see as well as, you know, show the public, right, that there are legitimate law enforcement, you know, uses for these that, you know, state law very much limits when you can use these vehicles without warrants. So, I feel more comfortable approving, like I have no problem accepting the donation and then we move that second part of what the donation will actually be used for until we have more information before us. But I think, you know, there's perhaps some misinformation out there about how these are used and what, you know, law enforcement, the, you know, real legal constraints you have and your officers on using these for surveillance and that, you know, we don't create, you know, this panic that all of a sudden, you know, drones are going to be in our backyards, you know, watching a sunbath kind of thing, that they have a clear, you know, directive from city council and MPD. you know, directive from city council and MPD about what we will be doing with those.
Yeah, and I think, Mr. Mayor, Alderwoman Evans, I, you know, and I outlined just a couple of things in case that question came up, and it's, you know, search and rescue, the missing persons type scenario, crime scene reconstruction, we can actually truly get that bird's eye view to reconstruct a crime scene when they're outside, much like the one this past weekend. Accident reconstructions, when there's a fatality involved, we can get, you know, specific information about things that we may not see from the ground. Our bomb team can use it for, you know, checking out, like, some type of explosive device before they actually move in to look at it closer. You know, community disasters, when you look back at the flood, we would be able to, if we thought there was a report of somebody that may be trapped in a flood area, we could actually use that to do the surveillance for us instead of putting a boat in the water and doing that. So there are a number of uses. We are restricted under sentry code by what we can do, and basically, it's the same thing we do day by day. So our pilots for that UAV would have to be trained. They would already know, because they're law enforcement, what the warrant requirements are, what the exceptions are, and we would have to follow that like we do in our daily work, so. But I'd be happy to answer any other questions, but that's-
Any other questions for Chief Klug, Alderman Padugula?
Yeah, I have a feeling Alderwoman Evans is looking at some of the privacy and civil liberties, you know, civil liberties issues, and I think that's very legitimate. It is a new technology. I'm more concerned, I guess, about coordination with other parts of the city. For example, several years ago, I think the fire department was offered the donation of a UAV, and they declined because of the costs associated with training and the whole host of issues. Now, technology and the operations of these has advanced significantly, you know, even month by month. So I would be more interested, actually, in how this vehicle would be used. You know, to me, the kinds of things you're talking about are just music to my ears. I mean, they could be tremendously helpful and tremendously effective, and I just want to make sure that the police are cooperating and planning and co-planning with fire and Public Works. And I think some consideration, some discussion of potential uses and some reassurance to the public is very legitimate. I think that's very good. I personally am not that concerned about it, but I think it is a step, and we don't want a slippery slope. But I guess I would be more interested, actually, in the coordination and co-use of this kind of a vehicle and technology. I mean, I just had a fantasy of myself sitting in the backyard sunning and this thing flying over me and me waving to them, you know, but there could be more nefarious purposes or uses, but it sounds like a really neat idea, actually. But, you know, if you could just kind of give us an idea of how it would be shared for emergency purposes later on, I'd be very, very eager to hear that.
And, Mr. Mayor, Alderman Padugula, I promise we won't fly over your backyard, but-
That's okay. I'll wave.
Unless we have to. So, you know, what I would offer there is I have talked to Chief Kronchnabel. We've been in, we've had some conversation about how it could be used for fire purposes. I know Public Works has purposes. I don't know who shot the video for Mr. Lakefield's presentation tonight, but it could be used for other city purposes. We just have to follow all of the rules that are in place under the licensing that we would get, and we have to go through clearances with the airport when we do fly, just like any private person getting licensed. So, you know, I take in consideration, yes, we absolutely do have to follow every guideline. We have to be careful of how we use it, and that there is scrutiny there that is already in place by many citizens. So absolutely do not want to rush a process and get into something that you're not comfortable with. So, you know, we would put a policy in place before anything happened and make sure that we were operating as you expected us to, so.
Any other questions for Chief Alderwoman Evans?
To be clear, I support all the uses you said of, you know, this is a law enforcement tool, and totally, you know, think it is in great addition to the tools that you have in your toolbox as law enforcement. You know, I just, all these things, just having them written down and shared and discussed to make sure we're all on board, that the public has a clear understanding before, you know, we say, okay, go ahead and get your drone out there, you know, because we know, we've heard from you, the great uses it's going to be and the limited, you know, times it can be used without a warrant. But I think just having it all together, you know, as a policy that we can look at and say, great, we're comfortable with that, you know, so to that end, you know, I think we, you know, hopefully can go forward with the motion to accept the donation, and then, you know, I'm going to offer a motion to defer the second item until we can, you know, see what that policy looks like and make sure, you know, when we move forward with the UAV program for Minot, that is one we're all comfortable with and the public can have ready access to and see before we, you know, say, go ahead, do it.
Okay. Any other questions? I'm sorry, go ahead, chief.
So I was just going to say, Mr. Mayor, Alderwoman Evans, that's absolutely fine. I don't know how long it would take for us to draft that because we use, we have our own policy program that we use. They all have a policy. I know International Association Chiefs of Police has a model policy, and one of the things that they express is transparency, and I think we do a pretty good job with the other tools that we have, and I think that'll be an important piece to include when we do public displays and that kind of thing, so that they understand and we can explain to them when those uses are. So probably more so than the 200 people that watch this meeting, so, but we'll definitely, that'll be part of our piece as well, so. Sorry, Mayor.
Not a problem, chief. Thank you. Any questions for the chief? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussions? Any further discussion? There is a motion to approve as recommended. Alderwoman Evans, this is where you would likely offer up an amendment.
Yes, so I'd like to have an amendment that item two, is it two actually on the agenda?
This is seven point, sorry, 6.7 and item, or the recommendation-
Oh, they're both one in the same.
So you can certainly, you can certainly separate it if you would like.
So my recommendation is to go forward with the motion to accept the donation from the electrical workers and to defer the approval of the budget adjustment to, right, is that what, Mr. Lakefield?
I would likely make the recommendation that the accepting of the donation with the budget adjustment with a UAV policy to be determined later.
Yes, sounds good. I like it. So that's what he said.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Alderman Padugula. Discussion on the motion. Discussion on the motion. This is the motion to, I'm sorry, discussion on the amendment. Discussion on the amendment. Seeing none, please call the roll on the amendment.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padugula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes. Motion, the motion, the vote on the amendment does pass. Now we're back to the original motion. Any discussion on the original motion? Any discussion on the original motion?
Can you remind us what the original motion is?
Original motion is accepting the local electrical company's donation of 8,000 with a budget adjustment. The amendment comes on the UAV policy to be determined later before expending money.
Thank you for that clarification.
Alderwoman Olson.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to thank these companies. I assume that they are giving it out of appreciation and gratitude for the good work that the Minot Police Department does, so thank you to them.
Absolutely. Thank you, Alderwoman Olson. I just add too that I really didn't have the concerns about myself regarding the Minot Police Department or not having all of this laid out. As someone who's dabbled a little bit in the UAV world, $8,000 doesn't go nearly far enough to get a sizable unit. Likely would have just been more of a training stand-up towards something bigger. It is great to have a policy. There is an exceptional amount of restrictions that go with UAVs. Some of them were outlined, but it's actually even far more restrictive than that. But on the side of helping, I think, a lot of folks that may have questions, I have no problem waiting until that policy is drawn up. Any other discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padugula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion is approved. That takes us to the action items. 7.1 is presentation and recommendations from First District Health Unit. We have Lisa Klut, who is the executive officer for the First District Health Unit with us, presenting the latest information for COVID-19 that is continued, that continues to evolve not only here but around the state and around the country. Good evening, Lisa.
I will just briefly let you know of status update.
Is the microphone on, Lisa? You may have to reach down, hit the gray button on the side of the base of the microphone. Right up top? There you go. Thank you.
Now is it working?
There we go.
Well, again, good evening. I will give you a quick status update, but I mostly want to make myself available to answer any questions that you may have regarding the COVID response within our community and activities that we are doing to slow the spread. So I think Derek has a right on cue. So he has provided you, this is the data sheet that we update every day, and we track in all of the counties, and if you want to pull that, Derek, up to just reflect the seven counties right now, that'd be great. So we track this information. We have total tests per date, tests reported and so forth. We look at positivity rates per day, but we also look, more importantly, at the positivity rate over the last 14 days. And you can see that on these sheets, and we are inching upward on all counts of both positivity rates, active cases, and currently in, let's see, I'm double checking. I think in Ward County, you're active cases. Derek, if you want to scroll over a little bit? There you go. Total positive cases, still a little bit more, Derek. I apologize, so.
237, right down the middle.
There you go, 237. So that's what's in Ward County. I will report that most of those cases are within the city of Minot, what we have seen. And we track this on here. We look at how it is done daily or how it compares to North Dakota, other counties across the state. We are also monitoring long-term care cases, and we see how many residents in what long-term care facilities are positive throughout our seven counties, and we also see how many staff employed at long-term care facilities. That information is sent to Colonel Melli at the Minot Air Force Base daily, and it is also sent to Trinity Health. They are watching closely those long-term care cases, particularly if they can, you know, those people are the most at risk to needing hospitalization, and so we try to stay ahead of our planning that way. Long-term care facilities, I will report that, I think it was Friday, we were, had about 62 cases, long-term care residents, and then another 50-some long-term care positives in the seven counties. That was concerning. That was about a third of the state long-term care cases. Today, that's down to 52 long-term care residents, and so that has moved in the right direction. However, we monitor it closely. Long-term care across the state has begun to feel the stresses, and you may have seen calls out from long-term care facilities for any assistance available. They are trying to break through red tape at the state so that not all of the people needing or working in long care need to have the credentials that typically they do. They are shortening up that credentialing requirements and how people can become credentialed. And so they are looking for help, janitors and so forth, everything from nursing to cooks to janitors to whatever that may be. So we are passing the word along based upon their request that that is something that is needed. The hospital situation, I was hoping Trinity Hospital would be here this evening, and they were unable to attend. I did just talk to them, and they asked me to relay this information, that diversion of patients continues to happen. It's happening more frequently than it was two weeks ago, but they are managing. And they have increased their capacity. They have, all of fifth floor right now is COVID patients at Trinity. So they are increasing their capacity. They continue to work with healthcare providers, Department of Health, and throughout the entire state, assuring that they are able to meet these needs. So at this point, they have not had to change any of their protocols, but we are in constant communication. We are hoping this trend turns, and none of those things will be necessary. However, we're making sure that we are as prepared as we can be. Again, it's not necessarily the beds, but the beds are becoming more short. It is always the staffing. The staffing is what stresses the healthcare facilities out. First District, we continue to test, 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 test. So we are testing at our static site or at the old Easter Seals building Monday, Tuesday, Thursdays, and Friday. We are at MSU once to twice a week testing. I am happy to report that those numbers, if you've followed their website, have gone down substantially at MSU. So they have done a really good job identifying positive cases, contact tracing, and containing those clusters. So we have seen a significant decrease in those numbers over there. So kudos to their hard work over there. Let's see. We, as always, are continuing to pass along the guidance. Oh, I was going back to the testing. I know that there was some concern this last weekend in regards to slow testing results coming out of the state. I was on a call this morning at 8:30. They are very aware of that at the lab. They are changing some things up and increasing capacity. One of the things that has changed in regards to testing is that now when we have large group testing events, we use what we call a macro test. That is FedExed out of state, and we are able to get those results back quicker. That takes some pressure off the North Dakota Department of Health lab. So static sites such as the ones at First District, those that happen regularly, those will continue to be the tests that we have always provided, and those tests will be run through the state lab. I know that they had a tough weekend, and I can't- I know that they had a tough weekend and I can't indicate that I know why all of that went awry, but they are working hard to rectify that. And their goal always has been 24 to 48-hour test results. So hopefully that comes soon. Again, as I shared with you last week, the White House provides reports every week. And I am happy to pass that on to you. I didn't run those off to you today, but if you would like to see that information, sometimes I think there's information overload. So if you would like that, I am happy to forward that on to you, the same with these daily, these daily status reports. First District continues to work with schools. As you heard last week, there was some change in the guidance to schools. That was done so that we could keep more schools or keep more kids in-person learning. We've all recognized the importance of that. And for those schools that have robust masking policies, have done an excellent job with developing strategies to reduce the spread, they will certainly be, most likely have to quarantine or isolate less students. The other thing in regards to the population, I know that the governor said that his incentive was to increase mask wearing. We will see how that goes. And it will, you know, it is still up to businesses, up to organizations as to what they want to do, if they want to follow the CDC guidelines or go with the other, if you're masked, if both parties are masked, they would not be asked to isolate or quarantine or the close encounter would, always the positive case would be. So it's really an individual choice. At First District, we will follow the governor's guidelines and that will be our recommendations to people as they contact us. We continue to work with large group gatherings. That has, we have not restricted or endorsed any large group gatherings. We're hoping that people, event planners, people make wise choices in regards to large group gatherings. We want them to be safe. And you can contact First District at any point and we can give recommendations on to how you may have a large group gathering as safely as possible. As always, the best tools that we have to slow the spread of COVID is the same thing that we have been saying all along, that is to mask. We know that those, that works. There is a lot of studies to indicate that. We would like you all to be washing your hands, doing the social distancing. There is a report that has come out today. CDC has changed some of their information in regards to the six feet. And they are indicating that if you are in a closed facility with not good air exchange, those particles can stay airborne for a bit longer. So there are certain situations that you may want to look at beyond six, six feet. But for more normal situations, we're sticking with the six feet guideline. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Klut. I appreciate you taking the time to be here and as well keeping, keeping us informed. And I think probably a good idea as well to share the, those daily reports with the rest of the council.
Okay.
If you're able to. And we can certainly make sure that Ms. Matalka here gets you those emails to get sent out. I do want to take a moment here. You had brought up the schools. Appreciate that. I've received a number of emails. I think there's a lot of folks out there that maybe just haven't really paid attention enough that knowing the separations of different governing bodies, that the city council, the city of Minot, does not operate our school system as the schools, the county and the city, the parks are all separate entities. If you could, Lisa, I did want to ask you one question. That designation of yellow to orange, has the state health department or any others given an indication of what they and the governor might consider of what that threshold is, is that was a concern when our numbers started to increase?
Yes. Well, no, they haven't given indication of where they will go with that. The governor does determine what colors each of the counties are. We find that out when, typically when the rest of the public finds that out. We are watching some of this data and we can make guesses as to where that color may be. We know that the matrix that they use is the data, the positivity rate over the last 14 days, and that's why we're tracking on the 14 days. We know that they take into account the tests that are being done. And we also know that they look at the rate per 10,000 population. That is another number that you will see on that. There is some subjectiveness to his color determinations also. And so right now, the White House last report that I received last Wednesday, I guess it was, did have Ward County in the yellow area. However, they were very concerned about how the trends were looking. And there is some anticipation that I think colors will be changed this week, but I can't answer what they will be.
Thank you. That actually was the answer I was looking for, but I appreciate it. Any other questions? Alderwoman Evans?
Thank you, Ms. Klut. It's always very informative. So you may not have an answer to this, but is, is there anything that we as a city government could be doing to, to help? Are we doing enough, given our limitations, right? We don't oversee the schools, you know, we're not. But, you know, I just want to make sure that we as a governing body are not leaving anything unturned that could be helping our, our community with this pandemic.
Well, the governor has made it clear that it is up to local jurisdictions to determine what policies should be enforced or implemented within their community based on their status level. And so all of the recommendations that you've heard and talked about, those are all things that this body can consider to slow the spread, such as reducing seating capacity, some of those things within bars. There is large group gatherings, some, some communities I know have done that throughout the state. There is a whole host of things that you can do. I would be happy to provide a litany of those, those things for you to consider. And it really, it boils down to what the communities want to do and, you know, whether or not they have the flavor for, for it. Some communities are and some communities aren't. So right now, I will say that we are not sitting in the situation that our neighbor to the south is, Bismarck Mandan. But, and no one can predict where this goes, but if these trend lines keep going, that would be concerning. And then maybe some difficult decisions do need to be made.
Alderwoman Evans, I just want to follow up too with my conversation, actually, with the governor in the not-too-distant past. As we had discussed some of those issues, it's also what is enforceable and how, how can compliance even be followed through with as being, I think the temperament that Ms. Klut had talked about is there's a lot of communities, Grand Forks and Williston, have taken some, I would say, much bigger steps than some other communities have. But the issue comes down to the question of enforcement and how many folks actually follow that designation. And as we're all aware, that enforcement would have to come through our own police department. So you had another question?
No, I would just, I would love to see, just want to list, I'm not, you know, making any promises we're going to do anything, but it would just be nice to know sort of some of the things that if there was, you know, a will, we could move forward with, perhaps to consider from your perspective.
I, I think the most important part of that is to look at the North Dakota Smart Restart Guidelines. And right now, those guidelines will indicate what North Dakota Smart Restart guideline, or what they are indicating they would like to see communities doing. And you can look at that for anything you would like to look at, large groups, anything. What does yellow mean for a community? Right now, Ward County is in yellow, so.
Any other questions for Ms. Klut? Alderman Padugula?
Yeah. I look at the trends and I'm also really concerned. It is a fine line. I think we get more compliance by education and by modeling. I notice more and more people are wearing masks, spreading the word that people need to be careful about spreading the virus. But I'm very concerned about that. And I guess one of my concerns besides the trend lines and the numbers are the fact we're starting to be into fall now and influenza season. Are you having any preliminary indications of what vaccinations are on the one hand and also on any occurrence of influenza cases?
Thank you for the question. Councilmember Padugula and Mayor, we, we have seen a significant increase in the uptick, in the uptick of flu vaccination, which is great. We'd like to see that. And so we are also trying to get flu vaccine done earlier than what we typically have because COVID vaccine, we have been told to plan for late this year. We are signing enrollment agreements right now with the state as to that we would accept COVID vaccine. We are looking at various options as to how COVID vaccine may be administered throughout the community. But what we do know is that we would not want both flu vaccination and COVID vaccinations going on at the same time. So that's why the effort to get the flu vaccine out earlier this year. For anybody to say they know when it's coming, they don't. We also do know that when they, when it does come, the two high priority groups will be healthcare providers and emergency responders. So when, when it comes, just think about nationally, all of the healthcare providers and emergency responders being vaccinated, then we would move into high-risk populations and so forth. So I don't think you will be seeing large drive-through vaccination clinics relatively soon.
Are you seeing any flu cases yet?
Not that I'm aware of.
When would you expect that? Normally, at least according to normal occurrences?
You know, I just don't want to say. I, probably middle of October, we would see some start dribbling in. So, yeah.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Ms. Klut? Thank you, Lisa. Lisa, I appreciate the time and the continued push of information.
Thank you.
That takes us to our next agenda item, 7.2. This is a proclamation Indigenous Day. The MSU Native American Cultural Awareness Club, the NACAC, requesting the city councils to consider attached proclamation recognizing the second Monday of the month of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day. Now, I did bring this issue to, or rather asked that the issue be brought to the full council rather than just a mayor or proclamation. I was doing a little bit of research around the state of North Dakota between Grand Forks and Fargo, four or five years ago, that it was an issue that was brought before their entire commissions, their governing bodies at the time. So seeing as that this issue has been tasked in other communities, I felt that this would be the appropriate place for that discussion. So we do have a recommendation with the attached proclamation. I would look for a motion.
I'd like to make the motion to adopt the proclamation.
I would second.
Motion to adopt the proclamation and a second discussion. Discussion from the council. Seeing as this is not a public hearing, but we do have a good number of people that are in attendance and is under my purview as the presiding officer of the, of the meeting, I would, if anyone does want to come forward and speak briefly about the proclamation.
Just need a moment to make sure.
Just your name and city of, city of residency. You don't need to have your address.
Okay. Two, three, four, five, six, seven. Close enough. Okay. Metakyapi, Dayanwanchiangapi. Relatives, it is good to see you. My name is Tawny Trotier-Kale and I am joined here with me today by four of my children, one, two, three, four. At least four children and then neighbor children as well. So we've got half of Minot Public Schools here today. I am an enrolled member of the Standing Rock Sioux Tribe as well as a descendant of the Turtle Mountain Band of Chipewa and the Spirit Lake Nation. I grew up and graduated high school just down the road in rugby. And I went to college at Mabel State University where I graduated with my Bachelor's of Science and secondary education, majoring in English. My husband Tyrell and our four children live at the Minot Air Force Base where the past two years, or excuse me, we've lived there the past two years and my husband serves in the North Dakota Air National Guard. I stood before you just a few weeks ago when there was discussion on whether or not to support an amicus brief regarding the shutdown of the Dakota Access Pipeline and the economic impact it would have on the city of Minot. So while that decision by the council was not one that I would personally agree with, I was glad to have an opportunity to speak on behalf of my oyate or my people. Such opportunities have not easily been afforded to indigenous people, let alone indigenous women. The beginnings of attempted genocide of indigenous people can be traced right back to the events of 1492. From the Indian Removal Act to the residential school era and right up to 2016 down in Standing Rock, attempts have been made to silence our voices and obliterate our way of life. Kill the Indian, save the child. Or the only good Indian is a dead Indian. We're not merely sentiments, but federal policy. Yet, we are still here and I and these guys get to walk along a path blazed by resilient indigenous leaders. So why should Minot recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day when we aren't on a reservation? Perhaps unbeknownst to most North Dakotans, roughly half of our tribal members reside in urban areas throughout the state. Ow. Minot itself is composed of a little over 3% of a native population, according to the 2010 census, where we know that our native population was vastly undercounted. So it has probably grown substantially since. At the end of the 2019 school year, Minot Public Schools enrolled over 400 Native American students, self-identified Native American or Alaskan students, making them roughly 6% of the school's population, putting them on par with the percentage of Native Americans in our state as a whole. So we do not merely exist within the boundaries of the reservation. We are an integral part of this community, our community, our Minot. We are asking the city of Minot to formally recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day, giving the well-deserved appreciation and acknowledgement to the often overlooked contributions to our state by indigenous people. People like Ladonna Brave Bull Allard, the founder of the Sacred Stone Resistance Camp; Demis McDonald, whose effort to change Sully's Hill back to its traditional name White Horse Hill finally came to fruition this year; Dr. Donald Warren, who helped create the first doctoral program for indigenous health at UND; Nicole Donahue, the executive director of North Dakota Native Vote. director of North Dakota Native Vote, who spearheaded efforts when the state tried to inhibit tribal members from voting; David "White Thunder" Trottier, that's my dad, the first Indigenous person to serve as chair of the North Dakota State Council of the Arts, as well as its longest-serving member; Ruth Anna Buffalo, the first Indigenous woman elected to the North Dakota State Legislature, who on her first term introduced eight pieces of legislation and got seven to pass; Dr. Twyla Baker, Dr. Monica Mayer, Dr. Denise Lajmane, Dr. Russ McDonald, Dr. Wayne Trottier, Jordan Lattiser, James Falcon, Cheryl Carey, Hillary Kepenick, Courtney Davis-Salwastok, Willard Yellowbird, Prairie Rose Seminole, and even Annette Menem in the back of the room. I could keep going, because I know so many amazing Indigenous leaders right here in our state. These are the people that I want to celebrate. These are the people who are helping and working for us to reclaim the narrative and tell our story. Will recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day magically fix all of the historical wrongs done against our people? Of course not. But it is a step towards continuing the much-needed conversation of how and why Indigenous voices need to be heard, especially when it comes to creating or reframing policies that directly affect our people and our children. Please allow us this opportunity to join you in the efforts to make the Magic City that recognizes and values the original inhabitants of this land and their descendants who exist alongside you. Pilamaya Yapi. I am grateful to you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Back up.
I was going to try to do this with my mask on, but I don't think I can. Good evening. My name is Annette Menem. I am a citizen of Minot and an enrolled member of the Turtle Mountain Band of Chipewa Indians. I am Ojibwe. I moved here in 97 to attend Minot State University, and I earned my masters, excuse me, I earned my bachelor's degree in elementary ed and a master's in management. I worked for the Minot Public School System and the Quinton Burdick Job Corps Center while, before taking the job as a Native American Center Director at Minot State University. I also serve on the State Diversity Council, Minot State's Diversity Council, and I'm an advisor to the Native American Club. I'm going to be using the words Native American, American Indian, and Indigenous, because those are the titles that were given to us and that we use. The land we are on today is the ancestral land of the Crow and the Hataza. This area was written about in the biography called Pretty Shield, the Medicine Woman of the Crow. Pretty Shield, named after her father's war shield, was born in 1857 right along the southern part of the Missouri, or excuse me, the Mouse River, also known as Plum Creek. That, this area was summer camp to the Crow. This was full of wild plums and berries, this whole area was. And it says in the book that she was born in the moon, when the ice over the waters, and that she died in 1944, still healing people. I don't come in here speaking my language, because I am a product of the Boarding School Act and the Relocation Act of 1956. My parents and all my grandparents, from many, many years back, went to, were part of the boarding school area and went to boarding school. Some were forced, taken by the government, some had no other choice. During those times, the goal was to kill the Indian to save the man. The boarding schools stripped Indian kids of their Indigenous identity, cut their hair, took their traditional clothing, medicines, religious items, and forbid them to speak their language. Stories of punishment and abuse were told and finally now have been written. My parents grew up in that. They grew up in a pack, not in a family. My parents did not know how to parent. In the 60s, my family was sent to Oakland, California as part of the Indian Relocation Act, meant to assimilate Indigenous people into urban America. Kill the Indian to save the man. My parents split up during that time, and my dad stayed, finished school, but my mom took us kids back to the Turtle Mountain Indian Reservation. These acts caused a lot of intergenerational trauma, but that didn't work. Some of the boarding school kids made it back to their tribal nations, relocated people, found each other. We found our own tribal nations wherever we were. None of these government acts to kill the Indian to save the man worked, because we are still here. Some of us are speaking our languages, but we're holding our ceremonies, we're practicing our religion. We are still Indigenous, and 45% of us live in urban areas. Minot State University Indigenous student population is 4.5%. We have the only Native American center left in the university system. We are within 100 miles of two tribal nations. Minot still is a destination place for our Native American, North Dakota natives. MSU plans to write an acknowledgement, land acknowledgement statement soon. We know it is important to understand the history that has been brought to people, to brought people to the land on which we reside. It will show respect, recognition, and gratitude to Indigenous people who call this land their home. And I just want to end by saying I have a few handouts for you. I apologize, can I get some? I apologize, I didn't consider the city attorney and the clerk. Of, I'm sorry, I apologize. But the handouts I'm giving to you are handouts of the Native American Center brochure at Minot State, a map of the North Dakota Tribal Nations and the reservations, North Dakota Indigenous, the North Dakota, excuse me, the Native American Club Indigenous Day process timeline, so the students, when they started, what they started doing, how they started with the discussion panels. And then finally, a letter of support from MSU Native American, Native American Studies Coordinator, Dr. Jay. And I want to say thank you and make which.
Name and city of residence for the record, please.
Jordan Lattiser, Minot, North Dakota. Good evening, Mayor Sitma, and members of the council. Before I begin, I want to thank you once more for the raising of the flag, but also to Ms. Alderwoman Carrie Evans, for your resilience in helping me find my voice once more. My name is Jordan Lattiser, and I am here tonight to speak on behalf of our two, our two-spirited brothers and sisters, as part of the LGBTQ2+ community. I am not only the, not, I am not only one of the co-executive directors of Magic City Equality and a board member of the North Dakota Human Rights Coalition, but I am a proud member and enrolled member at that of the Turtle Mountain Reservation, Vannishipwas. Indigenous people have experienced in their own and individual shared way what it means to be treated less than human. Our lands were taken, our people were slaughtered, we had diseases and poisoning, poisoning and flus injected among us. Our children were taken from us and our homes and placed in institutions and faith-based organizations, in an attempt to conquer and to control us and to make us feel more like those who, like, excuse me, to control us and to make us feel more like those who thought that they had to control over us. We had to survive dehumanizing, dehumanizing federal policies and treated as if, as if we were misbehaving children, as if we were unable to live the responsible or make decisions for ourselves. It was as, it was as if. We did not have the same right to be treated as equals and/or as fully humans. Our tribe, our tribal societies have been damaged by the onsite policies, forced change, and the unspeakable loss and grief that we have suffered. Despite all of that, today, we stand, we stand stronger than we ever have for several generations before us, able to exercise our communal and individual decision, decision-making on behalf of our people, more than our grandparents and more than their parents have ever dared to hope. Today, we are reclaiming and incorporating those parts of ourselves that it was our goal, as if it was the goal of the federal policies, to alienate. Our sense of law of nature and the blessing of our Creator's gifts is restored in present generations, and all of us, having been warned, have a strong sense of what social, have a, have a strong sense of what social justice is and what it should look like. On October, on October 12th, the United States will celebrate Columbus Day, in honor, in honor of Christopher Columbus, created with a discovery in America. But Columbus did not discover anything. There was already people living peaceful in the United States, as it is known today. It was not until the, after the arrival of Columbus and eager Europeans, Europeans, nation to institute a systematic practices of genocide and exterminate our Indigenous people by massacres best known as the Trail of Tears. Why, I wonder, do we set aside a national holiday to honor genocide? Little has been done to create awareness for the repression owed to the original Native Americans. The silence makes us kind of sad, kind of a sad sense. Could we expect any less in our culture? Or a professional sports team still feels a right that they can call themselves the Washington Redskins? Or that people can mock us by dressing up on Halloween in our traditional garments? We've had to do, we have to do better, for when we do consider a loaded history of systematic genocide that the Indigenous people have had to endure throughout our nation's history. Cleared out like field forests, cleared out like a field forest to big wave of the new American manifest destiny, this continued disrespect of Indigenous culture is, is not just sad, it's also shameful. So this is where we can stop this and continue, so this is where we can stop this continued ignorance of our ignored years of genocide and make a change today. Columbus Day is a representation of the old America. Indigenous People's Day will be the representation of how we've changed and how this is us now. Christopher Columbus never came to voyage to see a the Earth's throne. He never even came to America, yet we celebrate him. Do you want to celebrate a man who not only tortured and raped countless Indigenous youth, but also massacred my ancestors? Considering that Americans can use the words instead of fist, we've evolved into the adaptive life and now, and are now conquering and, sorry, we are involved and adapted to a life where we do not have to conquer and evade someone's privacy or kill someone. This is no doubt the murder in today, this is no doubt that murder in today's world is seen as an awful and most vicious crime. But Columbus saw to himself that while he was in Dominican Republic, where he could, where he could commit mass genocide. This demonstrates how Columbus was not only violent, but he also was like poison that whipped, that wiped out the majority of its race, my ancestors, the Indigenous people. Keeping Columbus Day just shows today's world how little we care about the issues in the real world, brutal and unnatural ways of life that will continue to happen if we do not step up and pronounce it is not okay. And today, it can be that day. So the question is, Mayor Sitma, and the Minot City Council, do you care about the issues in the real world, or do you want to ignore it like generations before you? I am asking you to do better, to be better. We must recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day to show that you are the leaders who want change for not only our community, but for the diverse populations. Stand with us and show us, and show us what change looks like. Thank you.
Name and city of residence, please.
Dwayne McGillis, Minot, North Dakota. My name is Kichewa Inini, and that means holy man. I'm an elder. And since I became an elder, I start following what we call the Red Road. And my spirituality, so full of medicine, and it's not medicine from the doctors or the dope or from the alcohol. It's medicine from the spirits. And the spirits come from the birds, animals, snakes, spiders, human beings, you know. That's why I was told years ago to wear red, because that's what Native Americans' spirits see. And to have an Indigenous Day in Minot would be beautiful. I live in a small FEMA home. I was in a flood. I was, I live in a small, I turned the banks down for loans, because I didn't want to go in the hole. I couldn't afford it in the first place. But I'm so happy there, because I have drums of my own, I have holy pipes that were given to me. I carry my father's holy pipe, and I have my own holy pipe, because I'm the baby of our family. And so I was given one, because of my long-term sobriety now, and my long-term of going to sundances and sweats. And so I take all these teachings. I have Black people come to my place, Caucasians, I've had Mexicans stop over, they want to get their life better. And I've been given a gift as an elder to walk that road and not to be a bad example. I'm wearing medicine tonight from the eagle and bears. In order for us to get those medicines, we have to have them in a dream. And then a veteran, we got to talk with the veteran to get the okay. And they got to be an elder. An elder is somebody that's 55 or older. And I'm enrolled on a Turtle Mountain Indian Reservation. And up to the last, I think about, up till about 30 years ago, I was called an arrow slinger, a wagon burner, baby reaper. What did old me do? I was a well-known boxer for the state of North Dakota. I was supposed to start my semi-professional in 1982, but I lost that because of alcohol. That's the only way I could run when I did not have nobody to speak to about the issues I was having. And so I, I, I really respect these people that come knocking on my door, and I don't expect a penny out of their pockets. One thing I would like them to bring is tobacco. Tobacco and Native Americans go thousands of years back. That's how we would pray. Back then, they wouldn't smoke it, they would light it, throw it on the grandpas, which we call, which were the rocks, and the smokes would go to the heaven. So to be able to have an Indigenous Day for these elders besides me would be beautiful. And I am proud of who I am today. I'm not ashamed. I back up those name collins with my spiritual shield that I wear today. And I want to pass that on to other people by having an awareness day. And by, those people come over to my place and I like it, you know, I don't, I, that's a good way to pass the medicine on that was given to me freely. So I say thank you to all. And I will say, abate washte apou. I come to you with a good heart and open hand. Oh.
Well, thank you. I would look to anyone else or any other comments from the council. We do have a motion before us. Any discussion? Alderwoman Evans?
I am delighted to support this proclamation. Make no mistake, though, I think as others said, this is not the, the end-all. This is a beginning. There is so much work on truth and reconciliation with our Indigenous communities. I think this is a wonderful and great first step for our city government to take, but I also don't want us to think, you know, we've checked a box and the work is done. There's a lot of work, and I hope people who came tonight and share their stories and their desires with us will continue working with us so we can realize the Minot that is inclusive and accepting of our Indigenous peoples and, you know, hold us accountable and help us, you know, make this the city we, we want it to be. So thank you for all coming this evening.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve in a second. Please call the roll.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pitner?
Yes.
Padugula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes. Motion is approved. And for good resolute here, I just will read the proclamation very, very quickly here. Resolution by the mayor and city council of Minot for the observance of Indigenous Peoples' Day on the second Monday of October for the purpose of celebrating the thriving cultures and positive values of the Indigenous peoples of our region. Whereas the mayor and city council of Minot are committed to strengthening the Indigenous communities by promoting understanding, recognition, and respect for all cultures and to enrich the community as a whole, and support empathy, integrity, humility, good stewardship of resources, fostering fellowship, and familial cohesion. And whereas the mayor- And whereas the mayor and city council of Minot support Indigenous Peoples' Day with the intention of brightening, rather, bringing awareness and understanding to Minot's diverse communities. And whereas the mayor and city council of Minot recognize that our city was built upon lands of indigenous people of this region, the Mandan, Hidatsa, and Oricara nations. Whereas the mayor and city council of Minot understand that in order to close the equality gap, government, companies, universities and colleges, organizations and other institutions should review and improve if necessary their policy and practices as they represent and impact indigenous peoples. Whereas Indigenous People's Day was first proposed in 1977 to the United Nations International Conference of Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas. And now therefore do I, be it resolved as the mayor and for the city council of Minot in North Dakota, shall promote the well-being of our indigenous communities. And be it resolved by the mayor and city council of Minot that Indigenous People's Day shall be the opportunity to celebrate thriving cultures and positive values of the indigenous peoples of our region. That takes us to number 73, which is a public hearing. That is the building relocation, 1425 47th Avenue Southwest, a public hearing to consider the request by Gerald Nelson to relocate a 2007, 2007-built two 806 square foot single-family residence and two accessory buildings from 909 54th Street Northwest, Minot, North Dakota. Also known as poor lying on the south side of the river in North 25 West, South 17, 15583, Harrison South 7, A8, and 1425 47th Avenue Southwest, Minot, also known as the Southview Edition Lot 2, Block 10, Afton, South 70A 2-01. Subject to the conditions, and we do have the staff recommendations for approval of the request. Did everyone get those directions clear? We do have a motion before us. I'm sorry, we are looking for a motion. I'm sorry. Way ahead of myself again. I skipped the public hearing portion again. This is a public hearing for those that, to speak in favor or opposed to the recommendations that are before us for the relocation of the property that is outlined on the screen. For those in favor or opposed to the recommendation. If you would, your name and city of residence, and if you would just sign in, if, was the sheet there, Kelly?
Yep.
Okay. If you would, sign in once you're done with your comments.
Gerald Nelson, Minot.
Good evening.
Not sure if anybody's aware why we're relocating. We took a Surfs River Joint Board flood buyout. Just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that.
Thank you. Any questions for Gerald? Okay. Appreciate it, sir. Thank you. Once again, a public hearing for anyone to come forward and speak in favor or opposed. If not, Alderman Janser.
Mr. Mayor, seeing no one else, I'd make a move that, I would make a motion that would close the public hearing and approve the item.
Second. Motion to close the public hearing, approve the item by Alderman Janser, second by Alderman Pittner. Discussion on the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion is approved. That takes us to 7.4. This is another flood acquisition item. City of Minot versus Tonight We Ride Incorporated, eminent domain, address 226th Street Northeast. On May 2, 2019, the city filed eminent domain action against Tonight We Ride Incorporated to acquire the property at 226th Street Northeast, which is necessary for the construction, operation, and maintenance of the Mouse River Enhanced Flood Protection Project. Defendant Tonight We Ride filed an answer to the city's complaint. The author believes settlement to the amount of $88,000 is reasonable and recommends the approval by the city council. City staff recommends the city council accept the tentative agreement reached with the property owners and their attorney, which is as follows: three conditions. One, agree to purchase Tonight We Ride Ben's Tavern at 226th Street Northeast in Minot, which is necessary for the construction, operation, and maintenance of the flood protection project to the amount of $88,000. Number two, his property owner will petition the district court for reimbursement of the reasonable attorney fees and costs. And three, possession of property to be promptly transferred to the city to allow construction for the necessary flood protection. Motion by Alderman Olson to approve, second by Alderman Janser. Discussion on the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Before we vote, I do want to, one, acknowledge the folks at Tonight We Ride to say thank you. I know it's not an easy process to go through the eminent domain, and also for city staff and continuing to work through the process, even though eminent domain has been filed to find resolution through this process. It is far from easy, it is far from unemotional at many courses, but certainly appreciate all the effort from both sides that have gone into this. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Motion is approved. That is the end of our action items section. Next is number eight. This is personal appearances, and I would ask that anyone coming forward to your name and the city of residency, I will ask that you write your address on the sign-in sheet Good evening.
Good evenings. All right, greetings, city council members. My name is Jasad Stewart. I'm a follower of Christ, a member at Trinity Church. To have the privilege of speaking before the civil magistrates this evening is an honor. Again, I say it is an honor to be speaking here tonight, and I intend not to squander my time on empty words or prattling. The subject I would like to address is by what standard shall we choose to raise flags or any public policy matters for that matter? Before I begin, I would like to lay down some theological and philosophical foundations. A reading from the Word of God, Proverbs 1:7. "The fear of the Lord is the beginning of knowledge; fools despise wisdom and instruction. The Lord decrees a moral indictment upon those who despise wisdom and instruction by referring to them as fools. The foundation of knowledge is to fear the Lord first rather than men, a sincere reverence and an awe of God's perfect law, sweetness, and holy attributes. And starting with God, we therefore are not random results of time and chance acting upon matter, but rather we are image bearers of God, worthy of love, dignity, and respect. If our ontology truly is that which most secular thinkers proclaim, then who cares what descendants of space dust believe in a godless cosmos? So what? But I humbly and unashamedly submit to everyone, tonight only truly makes sense if we honor God before giving our moral beliefs about public policy matters. If this pleases the council, I suggest the wisdom of God's Word should ultimately provide the statutes and precepts necessary for discerning which flags are appropriate to be hung in society. We must gauge the agenda and the message of said flags that are brought into question. If they support things that are not righteous, just, and noble, or if they do support things that are righteous, just, and noble for society according to biblical truth, then by all means raise such flags. Flags like the LGBTQ+ or even the Black Lives Matter, however, herald acts that are false, divisive, and unloving towards neighbor, namely that they herald the murder of the preborn, our little neighbors via abortion, a detestable act which has brought volumes of blood guilt upon our nation through the shedding of innocent blood, therefore making the ground ripe for God's judgment. According to what the scriptures teach, these heralded acts bring curses and defile the land in which God has so graciously allowed us to dwell within. We have all heard, 'Judge not lest you be judged,' and to love your neighbor regarding these matters. With all due respect, those who do not acknowledge Christ as Lord or have trivial training in rightly dividing the Word of Truth are prone to propagating gross error when spouting proof texts out of context." Now, in Matthew 7, Jesus is talking about hypocritical judgment.
One minute.
Like, okay, like if one is decried against a sexual morality or against another group, yet they themselves have taught and approved sexual immoralities themselves also. Christ's words do not mean, however, to never use any form of judgment, hence He commands us in John 7:24 to use the righteous judgment. I'd like to take a pause. How could that be? One minute, I've timed this.
You started at 7:01.
Okay, so even writing down consumes my time?
No, you started talking at 7:01.
Okay. Well, hopefully you get the substance of what I'm sharing with you. All right. So I'm almost done here. Okay. "Second, the crown jewel expression for love for God and love for neighbor is to make disciples of nations, teaching them to observe all that Christ has commanded you, even if they are offended by our efforts done in the spirit of love. In John 7:24, we're also called to use righteous judgment. So due to lack of time, I would simply point man to Christ and God's law as a tutor for establishing good laws, which act as guardrails in society to preserve and protect our freedoms. According to Romans 13, the role of government is to serve as God's ministers by blessing those who do good and being a terror of those who do evil through proper administration of the sword. It is our responsibility to honor your position of offering encouraging insight from God's Word and to pray for those in office. Anything contrary leads to the decadence of society. If you desire justice to prosper in our community, please resist the opinions of higher magistrates who call evil good and good evil. So God will bless you, and you will have the support of the righteous in the land. Anything I have said tonight that has fallen from truth and cannot be defended from Scripture, I am open to reproof. Our sincerity of my heart, out of sincerity of my heart and grace of God in my life, anybody in the LGBTQ+ community or those with worldviews opposed to the God of the Bible, if my blood had the power to convert and to secure souls of unbelievers, I would have spilled, have it spilled without hesitation on your behalf. However, the only blood that is worthy of cleansing sins and capable of saving souls of the just wrath of God is the precious blood of Jesus Christ." In conclusion?
Sir, your time has expired.
Thank you for this time this evening. Of course, things that are just, noble, and pure, I pray that God will grant you fruitful time in office. Thank you.
I'm not sure where the pen is. I'm not exactly sure where the pen is. My name is Christina Cavanias.
If you could pull the microphone down just a little bit for us, thank you.
Sorry. My name is Christina Cavanias. I live and reside here in Minot on North Hill. I am here not only as myself, but as a mother of an LGBTQ child who is non-gender conforming. We have been silent long enough. I am so grateful for you, Mr. Mayor and Ms. Carrie Evans, for raising the flag because I can attest to five lives you saved that day, myself included. Although many who are in my close circle do not know it, most of my family doesn't even know it. I am a proud supporter of the LGBTQ+ community as well as the indigenous people. I am so grateful that the motion's passed to support Indigenous Peoples' Day, and I am so grateful for the days of peace and equality that we have had. I will continue to fight for equality for both groups as well as for equality for youth because kids are coming out a lot younger now. My child is seven years old and has openly come out, as well as several of my nieces and nephews. This is something that is addressed. Raising the flag and supporting Indigenous Peoples' Day is a step forward in the right direction for Minot and for the state as a whole. Most of what I wanted to say has already been said. I don't come in here speaking my tribal language. I am a descendant of Turtle Mountain Tribe, but I have been whitewashed by the descendants of Columbus. This meaning I cannot perform rituals my tribe would normally allow me to perform. I cannot sing in the circles. I can sell my beadwork, yes. I can do my crafts, yes. But I cannot teach my child what they need to know. This is more common than people realize. Still to this day, I walk through the stores and am called a dirty Indian, or my people are called dirty Indians. This is horrifying. We still have organizations in this town who do not support the LGBTQ+ community and will make comments disgracing us. This is horrifying for us and humiliating. My child was not, was bullied last year within the school system, and it was written off as what he wasn't being bullied, even though he clearly was, because he went into school with pink hair. You should be able to, we live in 2020. We should be able to be who we are. I have never genderized my child whatsoever. My child will look at you and tell you flat out, he is a boy, his hair will be whatever color he chooses, he will do his makeup, he will dress how he wants to dress. I want to thank you all again for what, the choices that you have made, and I hope that you will continue to support both the LGBTQ+ community and the indigenous peoples, as well as equality overall. I have heard a lot of Bible phrases being cherry-pried lately. I would like to state that I have also been a confirmed child of Christ in my years past. I walked away from the Roman Catholic Church due to my, my way of seeing things. I am now advocate for domestic violence, for mental health, and for spirituality. The reason why is because I feel that the spiritual path is for me. It bothers me that people will justify their hatred, their bigotry against these communities with religion. That's all.
My name is...
I didn't know where the pen was.
Oh, the pen is gone. Is anybody?
That didn't take long. If you would, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Chad Chalmers. I'm from Minot, North Dakota.
If you would, you can just put the sign-in sheet over on the table when you're done, and she can fill it out, too. Thank you.
Oh, go ahead. Okay, so I'm back here this, for this session, to talk about transparency. Transparency is great, you know, you hear about transparency, you think transparency, that's what we want. As far as the city manager being fired, I had requested all the notes from Patricia Munson and paid $125 to get those notes. When I got the notes, I realized that there were 23 testimonies, or I guess not testimonies, but 23 interviews, and I didn't get 23 interviews. So, so the people that I didn't get, I didn't get Lisa Olson, I didn't get her, I didn't get Paul Pittner, didn't get that, so. Didn't get Jason Olson, police chief. Didn't get Kelly, fire chief, didn't get her. Didn't get John Zakian, the resiliency guy, so. Sean Sitma, didn't get the mayor's testimony. What else do we got here? Brian Billingsley, over there in Public Works. Janet Anderson, she's the librarian, didn't get hers. Derek Hackett, public information officer, doing a great job with the, with the live cast. And eight hours of testimony, of interviews, eight hours, she billed us for eight hours of Tom Berry, didn't get an ounce of that. So I guess the question would be, and so what I was told when I questioned the city of Minot, I was given this response, I was given this response. Anyway, and what it says is, certain records are attorney work product and are exempt with this, with this thing here. Well, I ended up getting a second opinion, but it was after a 30-day response period that it's required 30 days. You have to respond within 30 days, or this entity with the state of North Dakota can't do anything about it. So what I would do is I would ask you guys if you voluntarily give up those interviews in the name of transparency, or we can... in the name of transparency, or we can re-request them again when we don't get them, that's fine. Then we can have somebody else knock on the door and say, hey, they're going to have to have those interviews, so. And the other thing that I found is Alderman Padrigula, when it did come for the session, you asked for Tom to just, to step down immediately. You asked for him to step down immediately. Did you get the eight hours of testimony that Tom gave in his interviews? Had you already read all eight hours of those? Have any of you read eight hours of Tom's testimony? That's the question. I'm guessing that's not the case. I'm guessing you guys don't have those eight hours. Maybe some select people do, but to have eight hours of testimony being held back from me? I don't understand. That's not transparent. And I would, all I ask for is transparency. If this eight hours of testimony is conclusively, oh my gosh, this was terrible, I think it should be able to stand for itself. But instead, that eight hours, someone sitting on those eight hours, the person that was probably involved the most with dealing with the investigation from the billing is Alderman Padrigula. On four eighteen, it says you had almost an hour telephone conference with Josh Wolski, Alderman Padrigula, and Shannon Straight regarding the availability of the report. She billed an hour, point eight, talking about on four eighteen about the availability of the report. What would you be talking about for almost an hour for the availability of a report on April 18th? I mean, the bill is $660, so I don't know what was being talked about at that time, but I certainly would like to know. I'd like to know some of these things, so. But that's pretty much all I've got tonight. Hopefully, hopefully in two weeks, some of this stuff is resolved, so I don't have to come back with other ideas on how to get that information, so. But anyway, you guys have a great day. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Chalmers? Alderwoman Olson?
Yes, I can certainly say, Mr. Chalmers, I don't have records, you requesting records for my interview, I don't have them. And I don't know if any of my colleagues that you listed there have them. We were interviewed, we weren't taking our own notes, at least I personally wasn't, so I wouldn't have anything to provide to you.
It does say in here that she reviewed, she was reviewing the notes of all the interviews in order to build the memo. So are, did she just not send the notes, and they're just not available? And she won't send the notes? Does the city have any way of getting the notes?
So, Mr. Chalmers, as it was explained to me, and I'm going to limit my discussion here to a very limited topic, only because those negotiations aren't going, and I would also suggest the council to keep that in mind as well for that contract settlement. But as it was explained to me, as we had gone into that session, and I only had one session, but it was that her notes were to provide the entire summary, and what we as a council would be delivered was only the findings and not the notes. And the council, this council and the previous council, was never delivered all of the notes.
Okay, so, I mean, if the word is that Patricia Munson is still sitting on all of the notes, other than the ones that she sent that was forward, the 500 pages that was forwarded to me, then Patricia Munson has the notes, and for some reason, she's not giving up those 10 interviews.
I would have to defer to our city attorney to provide the legal language on where that's at in state century code. She's coming up right here, Mr. Chalmers, if you.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, we do have Ms. Munson's complete file. However, some information in that file and documents in the file are exempt records because they are attorney work product, and those records were not disclosed. I'm not aware that there were any notes that were disclosed of Attorney Munson, so when the specific notes relating to the specific people were referenced, I'm not sure that any of the notes were provided in the records response, but Kelly Metelka handled the response, so she would be able to.
Look to our city clerk.
Mayor Sipma and other aldermen, there were no notes disclosed in the record request. They were all exempt.
So, Mr. Chalmers, did you ever receive anything in result of your request?
I received a 500, I received a 500 paper package, yes.
Okay, but not actual notes from any of the interviews?
I mean, like, some of it was like, supporting documentation, like Kevin Turner's stuff.
The actual transcripts is what is, the city attorney is saying is covered under the exempt.
Mr. Mayor and Alderwoman Evans, Mr. Chalmers requested a number of documents relating to the investigation. In fact, almost every type of document related to the request or to the investigation, and we provided everything that was an open record. The only thing that was not disclosed were those exempt attorney work product records, and then there was some personal information that's exempt under state law that was redacted. Everything else was provided.
So I guess my follow-up question, Mr. Chalmers, is, has there been any requests that you have made that have not been provided that aren't under the auspices of the exempt documents Ms. Hendershot spoke of?
The requests that I have made, that personally I have made?
Or like formally made of, for records, like have you, has the city complied with all of those requests that they legally can?
Yes, but there will be another request, but it can't be from me. There will be another request. When that's turned down, that will be going forward, so. The legal opinion is that it was not covered under what's highlighted here and that it will have to be released, so.
Well, I do appreciate you coming before council with your issues. I mean, that's what this time is for, is for residents to come and, you know, address us. You know, transparency, I think, is important to all of us here at the dais, so, you know, hopefully, you know, we can come to, you know, you understand the exemption stuff, but certainly, you know, it is your right as a citizen to continue making requests and, you know, get those documents that you feel are public documents.
Thank you.
Alderman Padrigula.
I guess since I was mentioned by name, I guess I feel a responsibility to respond. If I could, Mr. Mayor, would that be appropriate?
Please, but I would also just caution to be mindful.
Certainly, thank you for the reminder. I don't know what records, what notes Ms. Munson kept or made. I know, I can't swear to the date, but I know there was a telephone consultation, telephone conference, that former Alderman Wolski, former Alderman Straight and I had with her. We were meeting about something, and we said, hey, why don't we call her and ask her? And I think the amount of time you're talking makes sense, somewhere between 45 minutes and an hour, somewhere around there. I don't know what date it was, but there was a single discussion, so I think there would be justification for that billing. I also talked with her on two different occasions. She called me to interview me about this matter, and one conversation was interrupted because she had to talk with Alderman Janser, and I took some very brief notes at my end, I think a total of maybe a page and a half, and I furnished those notes to our attorney, and she has a copy of them. I consider them attorney-client privileged, and that's why I have very carefully preserved them and gave a copy to her at her request. So I think there's recollection and documentation of one inquiry on her part, one conversation with her, and then the two interviews that I had with her as part of her investigation. And again, I furnished whatever documentation I had to our city attorney.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other folks to come forward tonight?
My name is Tim Bowman, and I live at 1308 35th Avenue Southwest here in Minot. I'm here today on behalf of the Minot Environmental Policy Group, which is a local six-person think tank, to share information with the council about a program called Sustainable Minot Business 2020. This program is intended to recognize businesses and nonprofits in the community who are actively working to improve our shared environmental future. In 2019, the first year of this program, five businesses and nonprofits participated. In 2020, this year, that number has expanded to 14, with a 15th business in the works. When customers see this logo, they can know, let me just find my spot, that their purchases are helping local businesses help our environment. To participate, a business must set three goals for the coming year related to improving the environment. These goals are determined by the participant. There is no penalty or punishment if the goals are not met. The following list is a sample of the more than 45 goals Minot businesses and nonprofits are pledging to do this year. Plant a pollinator garden. Implement office-based recycling of paper, aluminum, cardboard. Eliminate single-use water bottles from office functions. Avoid Styrofoam-to-go containers. Educate customers on proper environmentally sound lawn care. Host public education events on the topics of sustainability and care for the environment. Replace shop lights with LED equivalents. Move to aluminum water bottles. Establish and continue organic food waste collection. Conduct a monthly neighborhood litter cleanup. Install new brewing, cooling, and chilling equipment to decrease water and energy usage. Install radiant floor heat. Give spent grains a second life as animal food. Reduce supply packaging by 50%. Eliminate plastic packaging in new products. Source workshop supplies from recycled goods. Reduce water consumption bills. And implement refillable containers to avoid plastic waste. Include environmental sustainability as part of their strategic plans. Increase building insulation to reduce heating costs. Research a cardboard moving box exchange program. And reduce plastic bag use by asking customers if they would like a bag with their purchase. Combine these goals, save money, reduce pollution, avoid litter, and empower our community as a whole. The Minot Environmental Policy Group believes that everyone in our community has the ability to create a bright and vibrant environmental future here in Minot. That includes the actions and responsibilities of individuals, the business community, and various forms of local government. Thanks so much for your time, and I would gladly answer any questions if you have them.
Appreciate it, Tim, and just also want to say, I appreciate the direction that is being taken on this, is voluntarily and making that push through the community, as it was two years ago, I believe, that you had stood up, and other folks had stood up about the plastic bags, and then legislatively, that was taken out of everybody's hands. So I appreciate the avenue on which you're taking on this as encouragement in getting others to participate voluntarily, so, thank you. Alderwoman Evans.
Fantastic, I love this program. So how many of the criteria does a business have to meet to get that logo put in their window?
So there are no set criteria that a business has to meet. It really is up to the business. We trust that they know the constituents and the individuals that they serve, and they also know the supply chains and the constraints that they're working with as a business. So, goals vary from business and organization, and this was just a sampling.
I love that. I love that you tailor it to, you know, sort of where they're at, so. Awesome, maybe we can get one for City Hall?
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Still on public appearances, if anybody does want to come forward and speak on any item that is or is not on the agenda, this is an opportunity to come forward. If you would, just state your name for the record and your city of residence, and then we'll have you, when you're done, put your address on the signing sheet.
Gotcha. My name is Damon Kenyon. I am from Minot, North Dakota. I was here a couple weeks ago and spoke a little two cents real quick and then dropped the mic and walked away. I just want to retouch on that. I had a whole big speech written that I was going to give in favor of y'all for what y'all are doing, and I will stress that again. What I do want to bring up is, I think that we should leave government to government and religion to religion, and I hope everybody watching gets that, because everybody has a different view on how religion is viewed, you know? So what it says in the Bible and what people are sitting here saying, I've read the Bible, I know the Bible, I grew up as a Christian Catholic, I know it all, you know, I shouldn't rephrase that, I don't know it all, but I know what I've heard here the last few weeks or the last few meetings is not right and not what I grew up learning. So I think we should separate all that, you know? I hope y'all keep making y'all judgments on the fact of change and leave religion out of it. Religion is meant to be in a church, so all those watching tonight, let's keep religion in a church, let's keep what's here here. You want religion, go to a church, because that's where I go when I want religion. So again, that's all I got to say. Again, thank y'all very much. I commend y'all on what y'all doing. Have a great night.
One more call for personal appearances. If anybody does want to come up and speak on any item that is or is not on our agenda. We're down to just a few. All right, that does take us to our next section of our agenda, and that is under miscellaneous and discussion items. Number nine, we do have 9.1. This is the city manager hiring committee. I believe Alderman Padrigula and Alderwoman Evans, if I'm not mistaken, had asked that this be put on, but I may be mistaken on that. By the confused looks, I would say.
Well, we did talk about this, and I think Carrie was the one who was more interested in the hiring committee, although I certainly agree with that.
Right, right, yeah.
All right, Alderwoman Evans.
So I thought it was prime time with interviews sort of coming up soon with, you know, city manager candidates, that we discuss sort of our perspectives on who should be on that committee and start, you know, taking, you know, action to get that committee together so that that committee is ready to go when the candidates come to town to interview. So I don't know if anybody has any thoughts, ideas, suggestions for that.
I think Alderwoman Evans, perhaps I would ask Ms. Junt to come forward here, our HR director, in terms of processes of hiring and understanding that this position is a little bit unique to the entire city employment status here, so, not that I ever liked the words, how's it been done in the past, but let's start there, and then we can open up the conversation.
Mayor Sipma and council, in the past, with the last two interviews, what we had done, excuse me, I got to take off my glasses, they're getting fogged here. What we had done is we had put together two panels. One was a technical panel, one was a leadership panel. The panels did consist of stakeholders from the community, stakeholders from staff, and then also individuals from the council as part of those panels. In the past, the panels consisted of six people each. I believe, my thought this time, just to be a little bit more robust for the council, I think that the strength in the panel should be more council-driven than having equal say of staff and stakeholders. In the past, we had had two stakeholders from the community, two from each staff member, or two from staff and then two from council, but I think that it would be important to have the council have a stronger presence, this time with maybe three individuals on that panel for each of the panels versus the two. So that, I mean, that's my personal opinion.
And this might very well be a question for our city attorney, but if we have three aldermen and three aldermen doing separate interviews, is there any issues with continuation of meeting for open meetings laws in the terms of that hiring process?
I believe at that point, it is open meetings for the final interview.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if the city council appoints any two or more people to do a certain task, even if it's not final authority for something, any meeting of those two or more people would be an open meeting. If you have both of them at the same time, you would notice both meetings at the same time.
Okay, thank you for that reminder and clarification.
Just to state, we did do that in the past as well. We did have two separate sessions happening at the same time in a round robin type format, and we did notice those meetings, so.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Junt. Any questions for Lisa while she's at the podium there? Alderwoman Olson.
I guess it's really more of a comment than it is a question, but Alderman Janser and I have been up here a long time, so I'm remembering back about three interviews. And we had a process that was in place where the final three candidates presented during, it was a luncheon situation, I think with COVID, we would avoid a luncheon situation, but I'd like to see. But I'd like to see an opportunity where probably our final three candidates would make some sort of public presentation. And maybe this is the venue, and maybe it's the auditorium. I don't know exactly how that would look. But again, give them an opportunity to present, and we would have community members there. I think we've learned something through all that we've gone through in these last number of months, that the responsibility for the authority over the city manager lies on this dais. And I'd like to see all of us involved in some fashion, whether it is all of us in this kind of format, or if it is committee and committee somehow. But I just think ultimately, it needs to fall on us. So if there's a way that we can create that kind of situation, that would be my recommendation.
I was just going to state, Alderwoman Olson, that can be certainly something we can bring up to the recruiter to bring in as a format for our interview process. I mean, we can sort of tailor it the way we want it to be.
And I guess I should add, Mr. Mayor, if I could continue, this in no way means that I don't appreciate the input from our other stakeholders, because I think that that is important information that we do get from business owners and residents and students, and however that looks. So I do value their opinion, but I think ultimately, that decision needs to fall with us.
Other questions for Ms. Junt at this time? Lisa, if you could just give us a quick reminder on where we're at in the process and timeframe.
Mr. Mayor and Council, right now, the applications are in the hands of the recruiter. She has until the 16th to be able to reach out to those individuals that she feels were qualified for that position. She did send me an email later today, and we will be, I will be reaching out to you because we're going to be scheduling an executive session here coming in the next week of the 19th. So I'll try and reach out to you as we get a little closer to that, so that we can schedule that. That session will give us an opportunity to review those applicants that she felt were qualified, so that we can whittle them down to our finalists, three or four, depending on whoever we choose to bring in.
Thank you.
Well, I guess though, we're still not any further ahead on who, like, Lisa, it sounds like you want full council involvement, and I would tend to support that, even if it meant open meetings laws, you know, are triggered. I think we have to have a discussion about this and not leave it to one person, whether that's Lisa or the mayor, to comprise this committee. I mean, I know when I talked to voters running on this campaign, this is an issue they felt very strongly about, like, their number one issue is the hiring of the next city manager and it not being left to, out of, you know, like Lisa said, we are the ultimate, you know? When there are decisions that the public doesn't agree with, they're not, you know, coming to Ms. Junt and complaining. They're coming to us and complaining. And so it is, you know, ultimately, the one city position that answers directly to us. And I really feel like we need to have a much more active role in the hiring of this city manager than previous administrations. And I'm just trying to figure out what that looks like, so we can try and make that happen.
Alderman Padagula.
Yeah, I agree that ultimately, the council has the decisive role. I very much want to hear from the other constituencies, city employees, in particular, department heads especially. They would have to work with this person. And I think members of the community, and I think some sort of public presentation or introduction or whatever would be suitable. One of the ideas that came up, and that's part of the reason I agreed with Carrie that we should be talking about this publicly, is maybe we shouldn't have any committees. Maybe the committee should just be us. Now, I haven't really thought through the pros and cons of that, but I mean, ultimately, we have to decide. One of the things that concerned me last time was that the selection committee, I don't know if they took it upon themselves that we're specifically given that authority to make an offer. And it came to the council as a matter of essentially, you know, up or down on one particular candidate. And that, I think, is not such a good idea. I have questions about it, put it that way. I think the council should be more actively involved earlier. I personally sat through all of the committee meetings, didn't get a vote on them, but did get a vote eventually. So I think in that sense, if you want, you know, there are lots of opportunities for involvement. And the one downside, I think, if the council itself acts as the interview committee, is that we're probably talking about at least a full day, probably more of work. And for some people who have, you know, regular jobs, that may be time prohibitive. So I'd like to see input from lots of different people. I don't know that we necessarily need to have, you know, a committee. That's what we've done in the past. I think it's worked okay, but I think for me, the key thing is, you know, active council involvement early on in the process and not being put in the position of delegating essentially the offer to a smaller group, whether it be the mayor or whoever, or to representatives of this committee. Because when it gets to that point, it's too late. I mean, it'd be very embarrassing if the committee recommends somebody, and we all of a sudden come in and say, "No, we don't like this person." Besides embarrassing, I think that's poor practice and poor policy. So to me, the issue is, you know, I think a committee needs to be looking at this person and these people, and the question is, who should constitute that committee and what sources of data should they be getting? That's the issue for me.
Lisa, just for clarification, because I've never gone through a process like this, the position of mayor's been mentioned twice as having a final decision. Has any mayor ever had the final decision on hiring that position?
Mr. Mayor, it's never been just the mayor.
Okay, thank you. We look forward to direction. Alderman Pitner.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to just put my thoughts out there. Again, I would like to be involved in this process again, whether it's a day of work that we need to take off to be here. We ran so that we could be involved, so that we can make these decisions. This individual who may fill this position, him or her, will inevitably be leading this organization, the city of Minot, not MADC, not the chamber, not any other organization. We need to do what's best for this organization, I think, moving forward. So as much as I'd like the input, and I hope that whoever is hired for this position can work well with those organizations, we want someone that works for us and works for the citizens in this capacity. So again, I look forward to being, I look forward to being a part of the process. I expect to be a part of the process, as I hope everyone else on the dais is. Again, some of us have had a crack at this before. I haven't, so I'd like to be a part of it.
Alderman Janser.
I don't disagree with anything that's been said particularly. I think, you know, I certainly expect to be involved. One request that I would make, based on experience with some of our previous process, is that we build in some time at the end to think and discuss adequately. You know, I think, I have the feeling that, you know, there was a couple, there's time in the past where, you know, we had these three folks come in, we narrowed it down to a finalist, and an offer was made that same day, and it, you know, went that fast.
Correct.
I would humbly request that there be some intervening time in there. And I know these people want to, you know, they want to know if they're being selected because they may have other, you know, possibilities and so forth. But I think we need to give ourselves somehow in the process enough time to be able to talk amongst ourselves and discuss what we want to do, and also to be able to think about what we've heard from these candidates when we visited with them.
Alderman Ross.
Ms. Junt, what kind of, or what's the size of the pool that you anticipate bringing in for interviews?
Alderman Ross and Council, right now, the number of applicants, as I stated to you, is 50. I haven't gotten the final figure as to who, after the recruiter's initial interview, would be a good candidate to bring in. That information I would have on the 16th. So my suggestion, after we break this down, is I wouldn't bring in more than three or four maximum. I mean, that's just too many people otherwise.
Any further thoughts on what that committee or committees looks like? As it is apparent that it is going to be an open meeting regardless. Alderman Ross.
Yeah, I, if there's a way that we can, Mr. Mayor, if we can figure out Alderman Padagula's Committee of the Whole, I, my opinion is, there's no more important hire for the future of the city of Minot right now than this person who's going to lead us into the future. There's so many things that are going to be on his or her plate that it's important that we are all a part of this process. And if it's only going to be three or four, let's get it done.
So I guess I'm going to put, oh, sorry, put a motion on the table to the committee, the hiring committee for the incoming city manager will be the Committee of the Whole.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second for the committee to be the Committee of the Whole. Discussion on that. Alderman Padagula.
Before I go too far in supporting what I seconded, are you set up, Lisa, to gather inputs systematically from department heads and, to some extent, community people and staff? What I'm thinking of is the meetings we had about the gathering space, where we had these big public meetings, and people could submit online sometimes, which raised some issues, or in a box, their thoughts, so they could submit a questionnaire. Is that something you'd have the resources to do if we decided to do this ourselves, and yet try to get systematically input from other constituencies?
Alderman Padagula and Council, I'd have to probably reach out to Derek Hackett. I don't have the staff or the capabilities to do that. Just, I mean, we can do a comment box, but that's not going to be very helpful if we have to do everything virtual. We'd have to have some way, you know, at this point, I don't know if it will be in-person interviews for individuals other than council. I don't know that information yet.
And here's the, kind of the premise of all of this. This is a CEO position. This is the, probably, as Alderman Ross pointed out, one of the most, if not the most important positions within the community. And as much as I do like opening up for all comments, I think we need to take a look at people who understand what it takes at a CEO level to run top-down and still have the better of the picture in mind and at heart. So as much as I do appreciate that, I think if we're taking input, let's take it from the folks that truly understand what that position is going to have to bring in terms of assets to the table to be successful. Alderman Pitner.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, are we talking like a candidate forum? Some of us recently went through that, through reelection, have a panel, and not necessarily citizens, but maybe stakeholders in the audience to ask questions. Is that what we're discussing?
I think the first step, oh, sorry, Mayor. The first step would be, you know, agreeing who this committee is, and then, you know, that committee, you know, can then perhaps meet before interviews come and decide what that structure is going to look like. And I'm not certain we have to make that decision this evening about what it would look like. I certainly would if it's going to be, you know, subject to open meeting. I like the idea of having, you know, seeing the candidate perform, you know, for lack of a better word, for the public. You know, whether that's a 10-minute presentation on an issue he or she, you know, thinks is important to Minot or something like that, and then maybe getting that kind of input. But I, you know, I didn't, I don't have, you know, some thought out, you know, this is how I think the committee should, you know, proceed then with interviewing or the candidate form kind of stuff. You know, I would hope we could come up with that.
Alderman Janser.
I guess I would point out that any way you cut it, this body is the final decision-maker on who gets hired. You know, understanding that, I'm okay with the motion to make, I guess, to affirm us as having a primary role in the interview process. But I would not be in favor of it if it means, for instance, the exclusion of some of the other stakeholders in the community from having an opportunity to speak with these folks and interview them a little bit, and for having us benefit from their insights. And so, you know, I guess, in that way, you know, I think we sort of have the best of both worlds. We are certainly primary, you know, from the beginning of the process and all through. But we also have the insight from the department heads and from other stakeholders in the community that are leaders in this town. So that would be my take on it.
Alderman Pitner.
I'm just trying to work through this in my head. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just getting a little lost in all of the, what this is going to look like, or what we're trying to accomplish actually right here. Couldn't we do a candidate forum, just like we have, to where we are present, but we don't participate, and we can have the stakeholders interview these individuals? It'd be an open meeting. We could all be there. It'll be posted, and we would act as, say, the citizens in an election, and we would have our vote off of those answers, off of how they perform in those responses. I'm just trying to get it so that we can all be there and be a part of this process, and again, not have to watch our back with open meetings and things like that. I'm just trying to process this, I guess, and get a picture.
Alderman Janser.
I don't think, I guess, I wouldn't have a problem with doing that, but I don't think it has to be one thing. I think we could, you could have some kind of an event like that, including stakeholders and so forth. But I think then, maybe we all, in our own open meeting, as a, acting as a Committee of the Whole, interview these folks as well. So I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't narrow it down to just one shot or one particular event.
Alderman Ross.
You know, it could very likely look like, you know, I mean, if we have a maximum of four candidates coming in, we have a stakeholders group, they're off-site, we have an opportunity to talk onsite here, and then we just get feedback from the stakeholders group, whether it's weighted forums or, you know, feedback from them after we do it all. We're not involved with the stakeholders. They've got their own thing. Being there, we may influence somehow, or they may want to hold back. Let's have a separate stakeholders group, and then just round robin. Just send them, they're there for an hour, then they come up here for an hour, and they got to be ready for that, you know? So, I mean, that's what I would propose, and that's, I think that would be an effective way to do it.
Alderwoman Evans.
Alderman Ross, so you would, it wouldn't be either or, it'd be both and, right? There'd be the outside stakeholder stuff, but then we as a body would still have some specific questions and an interview kind of thing we would do with the candidates?
Councilmember Evans, the way I see it is that we would have a stakeholders group of six members. They would be set up at some other conference room, whether it's here or whether it's off-site.
Okay.
And then we would have, we would interview them, and then the candidates would then spend some time with the stakeholders group. Then afterwards, they would report back to us, if there was a head of that committee or something like that. They would report back to us, or maybe it could be we all gathered together in the chambers and discuss it and get their feedback.
Any other discussion or ideas? There is a motion for the Committee of the Whole and a second. Alderman Padagula, do you have anything to add?
Yes, I was going to say that I don't know that we need to decide this. My push was to get us to be talking about this. And, you know, I could go with any of the options, practically speaking. I mean, I think it's important to reach out, and that's one thing I guess I'd correct you on, Sean, is I think we should ask everybody, but I'm not going to wait everybody equally. Obviously, the ones who have more expertise, more relevance, more standing, I would put more weight on their opinions. It's not a popularity contest for me. And you're right, people are going to have technical expertise in assessing a potential CEO, and I would put much more stock in that. But I think it is important, if for no other reason than the sake of transparency, in giving people a chance to speak. You know, another set of eyes, another set of ears may pick up things that we miss. And I think it just kind of shows good faith, as Carrie was saying. A lot of people were very concerned and are very concerned about this choice. And I think it would be showing good faith toward them and recognizing their desire to be involved, and rewarding, reinforcing that desire by giving them some opportunity to submit input. Maybe it doesn't have to be standardized, because you don't have the resources, but certainly for us to take, like Mark was saying, to take some time, be open to input. for us to take, like Mark was saying, to take some time, be open to input and think it through and hash it out. So, you know, I'd like to see us involved early at the start. If we go with this two-committee or two-panel model, I'd like to see three of us out of the six or out of the seven be alderpeople and be in it from the beginning. You know, the mechanics don't matter so much to me as us having a real early crack and then having the benefit of some input from others, you know, and us would wait, us weighing that accordingly. And then I think the key thing, you know, is what Mark was saying, that's the thing that I think was, I was most concerned about last time. I think the process went reasonably well, but I think that committee acted very quickly because people were leaving town and I just didn't feel comfortable with that. There was a good process, actually. I think there was a lot of discussion. I think Joshua was the only non-members of the committee in the room. But I think that's the point where the council needs to take definitive action and not just kind of let things roll along. I think we have to take ownership of the decision.
Alderman Janser.
I think there's a great benefit in setting expectations for the candidates, you know, so that, for instance, if they're coming in for a day, let's say, you know, they understand that we are going to have a day or two after that before we make an offer to anybody. And so setting those expectations, you know, can kind of make the process more palatable to them and perhaps better for us.
Any further discussion before we vote? We have a motion and a second for the committee of the whole with no designation of the second committee other than formal discussion. Alderman Ross.
I kind of take it from the hesitation, you're looking for an amendment.
I'm looking for an amendment simply because it is just the committee of the whole that would make the decision.
I would move to amend that we also include in this process as a committee of the whole, a separate committee of stakeholders to join us in this process.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second for the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment? Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pitner?
Yes.
Padugula?
Yes.
Motion is approved or the motion to amend is approved. Back to the original motion. Discussion on the original motion is amended. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pitner?
Yes.
Padugula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Motion is approved. That does take us down to the next item, which is executive session. But before we get into an executive session, I do have one more item on miscellaneous and discussion. With Lisa Klut that was here from First District Health Unit and recommendations that will be coming, one of the discussions that I did have with the governor was actually under the masking for visitors to public buildings. And given the fact that the issue is whether or not enforcement or compliance tends to be the issue with the question of masking, we do have the ability to look at that for visitors coming into city-owned public facilities where the city operates and does business. That was one of the recommendations that came through a number of different discussions from community leaders that has been tasked in some communities. Others have closed their facilities to the public by appointment only. For consideration, I would look to the council on whether or not that that is something that they find amenable for the city employees, for their working environment themselves, looking at numbers if the Ward County moves into the orange. Alderwoman Evans.
So being on the board of the library, just I think I've shared, the library is already required masking. So what would that leave us with? City Hall?
Public Works.
Public Works.
The Fire Department and Police Department really don't have visitors as of right now. We do have the water treatment plant. I'm going to guess that we don't have visitors going in there. But essentially, two major touchpoints where we do have a number of employees and if I'm forgetting one, Mr. Lakefield, you can certainly, we do have the city sign shop and some others, but that fall under Public Works. We'd be looking at City Hall and Public Works generally and what we're talking about is visitors coming into the building. It is just a topic for open discussion, is nothing that, nothing of absolute determination here, but given the numbers and given the trend that we're on, it did look like a reasonable step, at least, within the confines of our city government. Alderman Padugula.
Yeah, Mayor, that makes a lot of sense to me. I don't want to, right now at least, get into the issue of compulsory wearing in general and in public. I think most people have some measure of common sense, but I think we have an obligation to protect our employees, almost all of whom are essential personnel. And I think certainly we can set a good role model for other organizations and institutions and businesses in the community. I think if we go to that higher level of alert, I would very much want to see us restrict access to buildings, to our buildings on the part of members of the public, only if they wear a mask and have handwashing facilities available. I mean, this is the minimum we can do to protect our employees. And again, I think it would be a good message to send that this is serious and we want to take personal responsibility. I don't have responsibility for a store owner or a doctor's office. I do have responsibility for our staff in our buildings and I want to exercise that responsibility.
Any other thoughts?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Ross.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't that policy that we adopted or voted on a few meetings ago, did that address any of these issues?
No, just employees.
It did, it did address the employees where they were unable to social-separate for their office or for meetings. Alderwoman Olson.
Mr. Mayor, it's my preference in everything for our city-owned buildings, our city-maintained buildings, but businesses and schools and just anything in general in Minot, I want our buildings open. And I think that the trajectory that we are on shows that some of those doors aren't going to stay open if we're not masking. So if masking is the step that we need to take to keep everything open, then I certainly support it.
Again, this isn't something that has to be decided tonight. It can be action that is taken if and when that designation does come.
Two questions. I just wanted to ask Mr. Lakefield how the policy we did pass a few weeks ago for city employees, how that is working out and if there are any changes or, you know, what you're seeing and hearing about that.
Mr. Mayor, Alderwoman Evans, I think it's a work in progress, you know, and I'll admit that I haven't been the most faithful mask wearer. I'm trying to do better. And it's one of those things where we have to make it a habit, right? And it's something that's a little out of the norm. If you don't have it on in your office and you decide you're going to run down to the hall to the restroom, you know, it's pretty easy to forget about it. And oftentimes, you don't encounter anyone along the way, but sometimes you do. So it's just a little bit being more mindful. We've had some additional cases, positive cases with employees where we've had to segregate employees until tests came back. We've required masks all the time in those instances. So we've had to adapt a little bit, you know, with the changing circumstances, but as those numbers have come in and it hits a little closer to home, you know, I think the compliance has been a little bit better and we're trying to make an effort of being more diligent in that as well.
A second thing is I don't think, you know, this is our staff and our community. I don't think we should wait. I'd like to make a motion to require visitors to city-owned buildings to be masked.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Can I just do clarification for city-owned and operated? As we do own the auditorium, but we do not operate the auditorium.
City-owned and operated.
Motion and a second and is that?
It'd be effective immediately, not waiting for a designation change.
Okay. Discussion on the motion. Any discussion? Mr. Lakefield.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just some, to play the devil's advocate a little bit, because this is kind of a fractured issue on both sides. So, you know, the what-if scenario, what if we have somebody that shows up and does not want to wear a mask? Are we authorized to not allow them to enter the facility or, you know? I guess I'm just looking for a little bit of guidance. Right now, the way the, particularly City Hall is set up with the security improvements that we have done, we do have masks available. And in most cases, folks anticipate that and expect it and are willing to comply, but the issue always is, is what if somebody says, hey, it's a public building and I have business here and I don't want to wear a mask?
Well, with taking a look at what, and I would have to dig into my memory here if it's Williston or whichever community, if they're not, they are told to leave and they are more than welcome to stay by putting on a mask that is there. Comes down to continuation of government and public employee safety for the continuation of that service. I know it's a very polarized issue and there are some folks that are adamantly against any and all masking. However, I think given the uniqueness of a lot of our departments, and I'll use your finance office as one of them, I also understand that it is not just readily open door available, but if one or two people out of finance were to have to leave because of COVID, it's a significant hit. And I'm sure that we don't have just extra water billing folks and a lot of other folks just sitting around to fill up work schedules if that is the case. But I think it's a very amenable step without substantially infringing on anybody because if a mask is available and they're there to pay a water bill that takes all of two minutes, they're still able to do their business and it's a heck of a lot easier than if we have to close the building like we did back in March, April, May, then trying to do business remotely becomes more difficult for a lot of those folks. Just my opinion. Alderwoman Evans.
So I think two things. One is, you know, I think if we put the signs at the entrances, you know, in an effort to protect our city staff, you must wear a mask, you know, framing it for why we're doing it. We're not doing it to, you know, be Big Brother or anything like that. It really is to protect our most valuable resource, our staff. And two, if there are enforcement problems, I, you know, I know the person getting the water bills should not be the one. So certainly, you know, if we are making this policy decision, you know, you're the eyes and ears for the city council in this building, you know, and hear from other department heads what's going on, you know, get us involved and, you know, we don't want any city staff to feel like they are, you know, having to be, you know, chief klug. You know, we'll figure something out, you know, if this is becoming a problem of people not complying. But certainly, you know, I know it puts city staff in an awkward position in having to enforce it, but I, you know, I have confidence in our community that they're coming in to pay a water bill, they see a sign that says, help keep our city staff healthy, put, you know, wear a mask, that, you know, our neighbors are going to do that and our residents are going to do that. So, you know, they can't prove me wrong, like they'll do it.
And if it is a problem, we can certainly call an executive session and figure something out. I would look to our city attorney for the legal advice here because I have no doubt that there's going to be some recommendation here.
And council members, I just want to get some clarification. So the motion was to require masks for all visitors in any city-owned and operated facilities? Is that at all times? Because that would be not consistent with the employment policy that was adopted by the council, which allows you to not wear a mask as long as you're not within six feet of another person. And so the people who actually sit behind the water billing windows do not wear masks because they're behind a window and they have barriers, plexiglass barriers between their desks. So I just want to make sure that we're consistent with the two.
Kelly is the reason why the visitor designation, because of not everybody has the plexiglass shields or the separators and things like that.
Okay, so.
So I think it is for every visitor.
Every visitor, all times, even not when they're within the six feet. I just want to make sure that that's.
For now, I mean, if we have to tweak it, you know, I think, as we progress, but like, I think that's the simplest, cleanest cut way to go at it instead of, you know, and be like, oh, you're only five feet, you know, like then it just is a headache for our city staff and our, you know, buildings. So I would, you know, I'd want to start clean with just every visitor coming into city-owned and operated has to wear a mask.
Okay. And the only, Mr. Mayor and Alderwoman Evans, the only concern would be they will see city employees not wearing masks and so I don't know if that will be a deterrent for them or some sort of stance that they may take, but it's up to the city council.
Two comments. Maybe we could encourage employees to wear masks when interacting with the public if possible. I mean, not a heavy-handed thing, but, you know, things are starting to not get good. And, you know, if you want to be able to work at your job, you know. The other thing is I think the policy that Carrie's suggesting or the specific instance of it is very consistent with what's happening in big businesses. When you go to Home Depot, there's, you know, a six-by-eight-foot sign and same with Menards, you know, please wear a mask and keep your six feet. And given today's new information from CDC, they're saying that the six feet isn't probably enough. I mean, it may be good enough, but it really spreads more. So my thought is, and I always wear a mask, even if I'm six feet away or farther, and that's just the prudent thing to do. So from my perspective in terms of interpreting this policy, I would suggest wear a mask at all times when you're in a city-owned and operated building and try to keep your distance as best as you can and sometimes you can't, but hopefully the mask and the distance will do it.
And then just one more point of clarification. The only penalty would be removal or not allowed in the building. No criminal penalty. We don't want anything associated with that type of.
That is correct.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
As divisive as this is, that I think would be much more.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Lakefield.
Mr. Mayor, and I know a one-size-fits-all approach is going to be very difficult and, you know, one of the examples came up is at the airport where there are a number of doors. We don't have airport staff manning every door at that facility. It'd be very difficult. And again, I think we can do the signage and encourage compliance. The airline, once they're on the plane, has their own set of rules, but there are going to be some examples of situations where it'll be very difficult to enforce a mandate.
Very good point. Mr. Lakefield, the airport always seems to slip as I forget that there's a lot that happens prior to TSA. So with the airport, I can absolutely understand some issues going on there. Is it prudent to have the one-size-fits-all with the airport as well? Alderman Pitner.
Thank you, Mayor. Maybe not your question, but I view this as maybe somewhat similar issue we dealt with earlier in the meeting. I would feel more comfortable voting on this if we gave legal and maybe the acting city manager some time to draft a policy on this versus voting on it tonight. I would feel more comfortable with that, having time to review and maybe gather some input from the community. But I don't know if I could support a mask mandate for all city-owned and operated buildings this evening. Again, I think there's a lot of questions that we just don't have the answers to and we're kind of winging it, a little bit more so than a drone even. So I would look to maybe provide a motion to table this until next meeting and then give staff the opportunity to gather more information on this.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
I'll second.
Motion to table, second by Alderman Ross. That is one that is not open for discussion, so motion and a second to table until our next meeting. Please call the roll.
Pitner?
Yes.
Padugula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
No.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Okay, motion is approved. That is tabled until our next regular meeting. That does take us to our next item, which is executive session, the new city manager contract. The session is following the legal matters. Legal authority for closing this portion of the meeting is North Dakota Century Code Section 44-04-17.1, 4404-19.1 and 19.2. The topic or purpose of this executive session, it is to discuss negotiating strategy and/or providing negotiation instructions to its attorneys and other negotiators regarding the new city manager contract, for which negotiation is reasonably likely to incur in the immediate future and discuss in an open meeting would have adverse fiscal effects on the bargaining. on the bargaining position of the city. At this time, a motion would be in order to discuss the next topic in executive session, rather than in an open meeting. Is there such a motion?
I'll move. Sorry.
Mr. Mayor, if I could interject briefly.
Mr. Lakefield.
I think this item was put on the agenda in tandem with item 9.1. Should there be specific items that needed to be addressed in executive session? And I'm not sure if we have those identified, so I just wanted to point that out. The executive session is very limited, what can be discussed in executive session.
Contract terms only. And I'm looking for nods, if we've got a motion and a second, if it is the opinion of the city council that wants to go into contract details only for the city manager. I have a motion and a second, motion by Alderman Janser, second by Alderman Ross, I believe it was. Any discussion on the motion? Alderman Pittner.
I guess to Acting City Manager David Lakefield's points, do we have items? Like, do we have a bullet list of items? Does someone have anything to actually off? You do? I saw your hand go up, Alderman Padugula. Do you have, do we have a...
We're still being broadcast.
Do we have items that need to be discussed on this topic?
Sorry.
Are there a number of items within the contract? Alderman Padugula.
Thank you. No, I talked about this with a couple of other alderpeople and the city attorneys, and if we talk about contract terms, the advice I received, as I recall it, was it'd be safest to do it in executive session. That doesn't jeopardize anything. And the materials that Kelly sent to us, all of us, really are, at this point, are confidential, and the only way to keep that confidentiality in the form of a discussion, when we discuss them, is to have the executive session, I was told, pretty much. Am I correct, Kelly?
Mr. Mayor and Alderman Padugula, yes. Negotiations of agreements, contracts, can be discussed in executive session at the council's discretion, and it has to be something that would affect the fiscal impact of this, it would have a fiscal impact on the city, and so, the terms of a city manager contract would. And so, that's what we would be discussing, and it would be limited to that.
Any further discussion on the motion to move into executive session? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padugula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Motion is carried. The executive session will be recorded, and all members of the governing body are reminded to limit their discussion during the executive session to the announced topic. Any collective decision, collective commitment or other final action by the governing body must occur after it reconvenes in an open meeting, unless final action is specifically required by law to be taken during the executive session. The prohibition on taking final action during the executive session does not apply to providing guidance or instructions to our attorney or negotiator. We will now ask the members of the public who are attending to leave the meeting room, and we anticipate adjourning the executive session and reconvening the open portion of the meeting at approximately 8:30 to 8:35. I'm very optimistic. The minutes will show the executive session began at 8:19, and was attended by...